Order, please. Supervisor Collins, would you lead us in an invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the beautiful weather you've brought us here recently in the Shendure Valley, and we look forward to the continuation of our beautiful weather as we get closer and closer to Apple Blossom. Recent weeks, as your Lord knows, we've had several fatalities due to people's addictions to drugs and alcohol, and we'd ask that you embrace them, and those that are suffering from addictions, you give them support and love. Please give the guidance to this Board of Supervisors as we make decisions and lead this county in a direction that's favorable to you and to all involved. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Face the flag, please, for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Adopt your agenda, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one addition. Add an explanation of the fiscal impact of the expansion of Medicaid on local government budgets. It would be under item number six, county officials.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Supervisor DeHaven, second by supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab D, closing of the county offices for the Apple Blossom Festival. Tab G, Transportation Committee Report. And tab H, Departmental Fiscal Year 2014-15 Annual Work Programs.
Questions? Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments? Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? Hearing none. We will move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, March 26, 2014. Your motion for approval?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the regular meeting, March 26, 2014, are approved. Next, under county officials, the adoption of fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas a notice of public hearing and budget synopsis has been published, and a public hearing held on March 26, 2014, in accordance with Title 15.2, Chapter 25, Section 15.2, 2506 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia, that the budget for the FY 2014-15 fiscal year as advertised in the Winchester Star on March 17, 2014, be hereby approved in the amount of $351,630,800. Be it further resolved that the County of Frederick budget for FY 2014-15 be adopted as follows. General operating fund, $142,387,562. Regional jail fund, $19,387,370. Landfill fund, $7,116,205. Division of Court Services Fund, $579,572. Shawnee Land Sanitary District Fund, $1,099,747. Airport operating fund, $2,228,994,000. Community Development Authority Fund, $525,256. Lake Holiday Sanitary District Fund, $800,570. EMS Recovery Fund, $2,028,000. School operating fund, $140,504,479,000. Excuse me. School debt service fund, $15,754,651. School capital projects fund, $2,166,316. School nutrition services fund, $6,200,295. School textbook fund, $2,573,133. Inrep operating fund, $5,093,650. Inrep textbook fund, $35,000. Consolidated maintenance services maintenance fund, $3,100,000. School trust funds, $50,000. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia, does herein adopt the tax rates for the 2014 assessment year as follows. Property taxes rates per $100 of assessed value, 58.5 cents applied to real estate, including mobile homes, $4.86 applied to personal property, $2.25 applied to personal property on one vehicle to volunteer firefighters that are approved and registered with the Frederick County Fire and Rescue Department, 1 cent applied to airplanes, zero tax applied to antique vehicles, $2 on declining values to be applied to machinery and tools. The declining values are 60% for year one, 50% for year two, 40% for year three, and 30% for year four, and all subsequent years. $2 on a portioned percentage of book values to be applied to contract classified vehicles and equipment. Business and professional occupational license rates, 16 contractors, 16 cents per $100 of gross receipts. Retail, 20 cents per $100 of gross receipts. Financial, real estate, and professional services, 58 cents per $100 of gross receipts. Repair, personal and business services, and all other businesses and occupations not specifically listed or exempted in the county code, 36 cents per $100 of gross receipts. Wholesale, 5 cents per $100 of purchases. The tax rates for other businesses and occupations specifically listed in the county code are also unchanged. Other general taxes. Meals tax, 4% of gross receipts. Transient occupancy tax, 2% of gross receipts. Vehicle license taxes, $25 per vehicle and $10 per motorcycle. Sanitary landfill fees, $45 per ton for commercial and industrial waste, $42 per ton for construction, demolition debris, $12 per ton for municipal waste, $32 per ton for municipal sludge, $12 per ton for miscellaneous rubble debris. Shawnee Land Sanitary District taxes, $180 for unimproved lots, $530 for improved lots. Lake Holiday Sanitary District taxes, $678 on buildable lots, $264 on unbuildable lots. Starford subdivision taxes and fees, $60 per lot. Streetlight fees, Oakdale Crossing in Fredericktown, $60 annually. Green Acres, $25 annually. Be it further resolved that appropriations are hereby authorized for the Central Stores Fund, Special Welfare Fund, Comprehensive Services Fund, County Health Insurance Fund, School Health Insurance Fund, Length of Service Fund, Special Grant Awards Fund, Employee Benefits Fund, Maintenance Insurance Fund, Development Project Fund, Sales Tax Fund, Commonwealth Sales Tax Fund, Unemployment Compensation Fund, Dare Program, Forfitted Assets Program, and Four for Life and Fire Programs equal to the total cash balance on hand at July 1, 2014, plus the total amount of receipts for fiscal year 2014-15. The fire company capital appropriation will include the current year appropriation plus any unused funds at the end of fiscal year 2014. Be it further resolved that funding for all outstanding encumbrances at June 30, 2014, are reapportioned to 2014-15 fiscal year to the same department and account for which they are encumbered in the 2013-14 fiscal year. Be it further resolved that the construction fund projects will be appropriated as a carry forward in the amount that equals the approved original project costs, less expenditures and encumbrances through June 30, 2014.
Questions to Mr. Riley? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for adoption, as presented.
Have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is committee appointments. Sanitation authority. I'm real close on the vacancy, and, well, I guess it comes later. Community policy and management team, we have a recommendation. Greta Cherry?
Ms. Holly Buck.
Pardon me?
Ms. Holly Buck.
Oops, I'm sorry. That's the leaving party. Ms. Holly Buck. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of the suggested name as put forth.
We have a motion to appoint Ms. Holly Buck. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ms. Buck will replace Ms. Greta Cherry. Historic Resources Advisory, Red Butter, we ready?
No, sir.
Parks and Recreation, Red Butter, we ready?
No, sir.
Sanitation Authority, Mr. Mallory. I would request that the board reappoint him.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next is Historic Resources Advisory Board. Shawnee, are we ready?
Not at this time.
Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for a refund. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County attorney is in receipt of a request from Kraft Foods to file an appeal in the nature of an amended machinery and tools tax return for tax years 2008, '09, '10, and '11 wherein Kraft was seeking certain tax refunds from the county. Machinery and tools for taxation purposes are self-reported by each taxpayer, and in this case Kraft concluded that it had not correctly reported its machinery and tools. Thus Kraft filed an amended returns in 2011, which was within the applicable limitations period for the tax years at issue. Thereafter Kraft and the Commissioner of Revenue had extended correspondence on the matter, including appeals to the Virginia Department of Taxation pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1, 3983.1. The Commissioner now confirms that all issues are resolved as to the tax returns in question with a refund in the amount of $358,860.78 due to Kraft. The Commissioner, in consultation with the county attorney, has concluded that this outcome represents a fair interpretation of the facts and law applicable to this matter. Kraft has confirmed to the Commissioner that it will not seek a further appeal as to its machinery and tools tax returns for 2008 through 2013. Pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 58.1, 3981A, county attorney hereby notes his consent to the proposed action. Further, pursuant to 58.1, 3981A, the Board of Supervisors will need to act on the request. The board will also need to approve a supplemental appropriation for the refund amount.
Questions to Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley, in the material that I read, I concluded that this reduction in assessment in tax does not affect the calculations upon which the incentive funds were granted. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I had one. The packet that we were provided doesn't really explain very well what the error was on Kraft's taxes. I'm not sure, did they double enter? Did they count equipment that was in another jurisdiction?
Mr. Williams, or Commissioners here?
Sure. I am. When you're manufacturer, the only assets that are taxable are those that are actively used in producing the product. You can't do equipment and things that are shipping in other ways. Some of the assets they had reported, they had misclassified and reported to us as being support for the lines of production, and they were not. They were shipping equipment.
So they listed their trucks?
No. No trucks are involved in this either way. Trucks are taxed at personal property. They don't get any special treatment. But anything that is docking equipment, packaging equipment beyond the initial package that is sealed for protection of the public, like things that are boxed, things that are plastic-wrapped, things that, and the equipment that does that are not taxable at all.
So once they put the noodles in the box, what you're talking about is, once the noodles are in the box, they go down the line, if they're putting in a bigger box, we don't tax the equipment that puts them in the bigger box.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
That's what they pay tax on.
They pay tax on what actually produces the product, and in the case of a consumable product, something that humans will eat, it's anything that seals it to the extent that it is labeled as to what it contains and that is protected from the elements so that it's safe for human consumption.
Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Murphy, do we know that this conclusion that has been reached, does it, will it apply to any other manufacturing plants in the area?
We get other appeals all the time. If you'll remember, about a year and a half or so ago, we had an appeal from another manufacturer that was similar. The problem that a lot of localities are running into now is that these organizations are, these companies are hiring accounting firms that have no concept of what Virginia tax law is, or even in some cases, what that particular product does. Sometimes they've never even been in the plant. And so they produce these things based on just looking through company books that they are provided, and then the filing comes in, and sometimes we can catch it, and in this case, we did not honor everything that they claimed was not taxable. As my memo says, about 34%, we added back on.
So this does not open a door to others who may have?
The door has always been open for anyone to appeal, and this, you know, awarding this is just what's fair for Kraft, what other companies do, I can't say. This is just the portion of the refund, though that's the only time I come before you, when there are other additions to tax that there often are when our auditors go out and do a check. You and the public don't hear about that because under code, the only time I come to you is when you have to authorize a refund. And for instance, we were just notified this week of a $290,000 extra deposit we got in sales tax based on something found by my auditor, and there will be a like amount next month. But since that's an increase, y'all don't have to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, and if I understand the code correctly, they're only allowed to go back three years.
Three years is what's normal, so as long as they have appealed within that period of time, like we set to December 31 of the ending year, then, once it's in appeal, it kind of freezes. So that's why this looks like it goes back so far.
Thank you.
We fought it tooth and nail.
Right, no, I'd see that this has been going on for another three years after they filed their appeal.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about six years' worth of timeframe, but the three years?
Trips to Richmond, long-distance phone calls and everything. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the pleasure of the board? Question is to approve the refund and the appropriation to cover it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval, exoneration of Kraft, do you think?
Refund and appropriation?
And the appropriations. Do we need to?
All right, we have a motion.
Speak out the appropriations separately?
No, I think you do them together.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve the refund and the appropriations. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a request from the Social Services Director to schedule a work session. Did everyone have a chance to check the dates? Monday, the 28th was not good for me. Anyone else have a bad date?
I would suggest April 29th so we don't double you up on a board meeting night.
All right, Mr. Riley has suggested April 29th. Does that meet with everybody's approval? All right. April 29th it is.
It's a luncheon meeting.
Okay. Next is the, pardon me?
I was gonna, nothing, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Next is the added item from Mr. Riley on Medicaid expansion. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The chairman had asked staff to determine the impacts with reference to the proposed Medicaid expansion that's been tied to the budget process in Richmond, and what I attempted to do was seek out those parties locally that would be impacted by this Affordable Care Act legislation. The two entities that have the majority of the impact are Valley Health Systems and Frederick County Department of Social Services. Valley Health System, with them, the Medicaid expansion would provide additional revenue for the hospital and also provide additional federal dollars into the community. It would be spent at local hospitals, doctors' offices, and pharmacies. This is where the agreement between the two entities and the mixed bag of good and bad begins. Per the Department of Social Services, the expansion of Medicaid would likely result in a dramatic increase in the number of people eligible for coverage and an increase in applications. The increase in applications and coverage would probably range between 2,500 to 3,100 additional clients. Currently, the Department of Social Services has seen 186% increase in caseloads over the past 10 years. Currently, the department has eight and a half full-time equivalent positions with an average caseload of 937 cases per employee. This number is exclusive of the 800 additional famous cases soon to be passed down to the department from the state. The state did provide approximately $34,000 to the department for taking on those 800 additional cases. However, those funds do not begin to cover a full-time aid position to include salary and fringes, let alone a full-time benefits worker. The bottom line with reference to the impact, if this particular legislation were to go through and the additional cases added to the Department of Social Services, you're looking at a local funding impact of $1.3 million in order to comply or cover the new caseload that would be assigned to the Department of Social Services. If you look at the positive side of it, you're estimating $8 to $10 million in new revenue from Medicaid expansion to Valley Health, which is a positive. The last part of this plus side of this case could be that, as you all know, inmate medical care is not covered by any funding whatsoever, and it has been concluded that if this Medicaid expansion program went into effect, there would be federal dollars available to provide health coverage for inmates. And that is a big-ticket number for us at the regional jail with reference to providing all of those funds locally for medical care, because we obviously can't screen for pre-existing conditions when we arrest somebody. So it's expensive. But I've tried to take six pages of research and condense it into a pro and a con. Probably the biggest con is to us locally with reference to the Department of Social Services and the additional services delivered, and they, obviously you will find out, need additional staffing now, but if you add a caseload of 3,100 new cases on top of it, it's exponentially expensive for them to try and reach out and provide coverage.
So following the trip to Richmond to hear the governor's pitch for approval of the expansion and the points raised, I spoke to you all about it last meeting, I think, and thought I'd get something out earlier, but we just got it wrapped up. Mr. Riley ran into things that we didn't think about. Richmond is tied up in knots, people for and people against, but nowhere along the line did I hear anybody talk to us about our impact. So I'm glad Mr. Riley had the foresight to ask some questions and see what it is. Nobody talked about funding for us. The impact is significant. It is a very complicated subject. I asked Mr. Riley or Mr. Tibbs to forward this to our legislators so that when somebody decides what they're going to do, they don't forget that we exist and what the load will be to us if it ends up, some form of it, being passed. We've already got this pretty heavy duty that I was not aware of. Unfunded mandate was famous, and this would be a much more severe impact, and yet we do have some 31 people out in the community that are not served with a significant impact to healthcare costs in the area, not counting the jails. So please ask any questions that you would like to. I thought we ought to do it in a public session and say what we were able to find out, and it remains a very complicated issue. Questions? Anything else you'd like Mr. Riley to try to dig up? My fear would be we'd hear one day that the expansion got approved and bam would come the impact, which is what we're told would happen.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, if I may, is it seems, it just seems that there continues to be deception on the part of the federal government, which says, if you expand Medicaid, we'll cover the cost, when in fact, they're not covering the cost. Now, they may be covering part of the cost, but not all of the cost, and I appreciate you, and Mr. Riley, bringing this to our attention to show just what an impact this would have on local budgets that is not explained, not expressed, not actually taken up in any form of media that I've heard so far. So I think this is very enlightening to me, and although I know that legislators have a tough time on their hands, but again, it just seems like it's one of those things where the federal government, the state government make decisions, but they don't always tell the local government how it's going to impact them, and then, when things are done, we have to wind up picking up the pieces and trying to put together something that has had radical transformation to our budgets in a lot of ways, but it's of no consequence to them. They've passed it on. They're through with it. They feel good about it, and we're just left holding the bag.
Well, it was a compelling argument from the governor that people paying these fees to the federal government, and if you don't expand Medicare, you can't get your share of that, and that share may even go to people who had approved it. That's a compelling argument. Then the governor, it's the only new money I can think of that he used, throws bones out to the local government to try to get us to persuade our legislators to approve it, and I'm not sure that was a proper use of that revenue if that, in fact, is where it came from, and then somebody ignores the real fiscal impact to locality. So yes, one more thing that we can be upset about and distraught over, and yet, at the end of the day, we'll be handed a mandate edict that we have to figure out what to do with.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to mention that the HR committee, each month, has been receiving a report from a different department and county employees regarding their staffing levels and just what activities they conduct within the department. And a little over a month ago, we had a presentation from the Director of Social Services, and it was pretty eye-opening to see the impact that caseload has already had on the department and the dramatic, and I know it's touched on in here, but the dramatic increase in caseload over the last six or eight years in particular. caseload over the last six or eight years in particular. And clearly, that would have a huge negative impact on staffing.
Eight hundred people we were responsible for individually. I suspect that'll be the topic of the work session.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Follow-ups from Mr. Riley or myself? Anybody mind that I distribute the document?
I would appreciate it.
That will be done, if it's not already done. Moving on, we didn't have a public hearing. Proposed school bond financing by the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing on the proposed school bond financing by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Frederick, Virginia will hold a public hearing in accordance with Section 15.2, 2606 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended on the issuance of general obligation school bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $4.7 million to finance certain capital projects for public school purposes, consisting primarily of the construction and equipping of a replacement middle school and the architectural and engineering costs associated with the construction of a new high school. A resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds will be considered by the Board this evening, April 9th, 2014.
Questions, Mr. Riley? All right, if there are none, we will now conduct the public hearing on this proposed school bond financing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this proposed school bond financing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes yes, and the motion passes. Next is another public hearing on the public facilities and the 2030 comprehensive plan. Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is following up on some studies that have been undertaken over the past six months. The comprehensive plan amendment tonight is creating opportunities for new government facilities as the Board feels are necessary. What we found six months ago is when we started talking about some new public facilities, that our comprehensive plan didn't directly support such initiatives. And in conformance with Chapter 15.2, 2232 of the state code, we need to make sure that as we plan for government facilities, public buildings of that nature, we need to make sure we're consistent with our comprehensive plan. So tonight's public hearing is to make sure that we're there, we have the flexibility if you all determine things are necessary to construct, locate, relocate, whatever the case be, we've got language that gets you there from a comprehensive planning perspective. This amendment to the comprehensive plan was initiated by the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee back in August. They've worked on it a couple times, they've tweaked it, and then we're bringing it through tonight as the public hearing. So we've had a good six months to make sure we felt we had the right issues addressed. You may recall that you discussed this back at your February meeting as a discussion. There were some concerns about where these public buildings would be located. We've addressed that, and through that discussion, you also directed us to go ahead and start the public hearing process. We held a public hearing on this on March 5th at the Planning Commission, and they did forward their recommendation for approval. So going into it, what are we talking about? We're talking about adding, it's about a page, page and a half to the comprehensive plan within the public facilities section of the comprehensive plan that is going to be titled Creating Community with Public Facilities. And that language essentially provides the policy, the implementation, and the thoughts behind where you should put public facilities in the future. It endorses all the public facilities we currently have, which is an important aspect, but it also states the obvious, that when you locate new facilities, you need to keep in mind the efficiencies, making sure you've got services available to the entire citizenry of our community. So locations isn't extremely important. A couple things that, I guess I did a bold print here, I just pulled some of the paragraphs out. But this, I think, is important to note. It says, "Community facilities providing administrative and judicial services shall be located in the urban areas, which may include the county's urban development area, our sewer and water service area, and/or areas identified for future urban centers." Emphasize, the red there is obviously, we repeated the same word twice, I think, so we've got to, if I'm correct with my grammar, that needs to be picked up if we're going to approve something tonight. The key thing here is, we recognize in the comprehensive plan that if you're going to provide services for the most, for the majority of the population, you're typically going to need public utilities. You're going to need the water and sewer component, depending on the scale of your public building. And within Frederick County, your urban development area, your sewer and water service area, and other areas, which captures obviously where we're standing in right now, in this urban area in the city, those are the areas that have the public water and sewer, so that's logically where you would place new public buildings. So that captures, the sentence about the urban development area and sewer and water service area, we captured in various locations to really emphasize those are the places you could look to place public buildings in the future, to make sure that you're improving access to the majority of the population. That's essentially all I had to present. I think it's important to recognize that the way that the text has been drafted, if adopted, it would be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, and it would put the county in a position to confirm that future public buildings, we would be able to say, yes, it's recognized and it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which is one of those little steps that you have to go through if you ever want to build anything or relocate something. I come to you with the endorsement from the Planning Commission, and this is a public hearing, so we'd be looking for some direction, some action. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Questions for Mr. Lawrence? Go ahead.
Just one, Mr. Chairman. The way I read the edits, it would appear that we're requiring them to be located in areas of urban centers?
Not requiring. The comprehensive plan is a policy, it's a guiding policy. It certainly makes it, it makes it easier, because what that says is if you want to build something or locate something, whatever the case, the first thing that we're required to do is make sure we're in accordance with our comprehensive plan. So majority of the facilities that we would locate would comply with this.
I fully support the other requirements, but that one seems like it might be a bit restrictive. That could also be some of the most expensive real estate around.
Yeah, the reasoning behind it, the way we worded that way is, most of what we build, this doesn't necessarily apply, schools are being picked up in another chapter. This is applying to administrative building, if you will. Because of the scale and the size of such a building, you're going to need public water and sewer. So this captures it. I can note that within the same section of the comprehensive plan, we currently talk about parks and rec, and schools, and fire and rescue. So those types of facilities have already been addressed. We just did not address the administrative building.
Other questions? This looks to be exactly what we last saw. Is that correct?
With the, we added sewer and water service area, but aside from the addition of the Swazza references, it's the same language.
And is your particular request this evening, or your preference that following a public hearing, we take care of your double ands? Did I hear you right?
Yeah. I think if my reading, I was in preparation for today, I kept saying there's too many ands in there. So if you wish to adopt this language, I would suggest you remove the second and, which is in there two or three times.
I understand.
Okay.
Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now conduct a public hearing on the public facilities and the 2030 comprehensive plan. Board of Supervisors will discuss the proposed amendment. We have. The amendment is to follow up to and support of the discussion of capital improvement, CIP, and the proposed county administrative facilities to be, wait a minute, am I on the wrong item? No. "Located generally in the county's urban development, UDA, or sewer and water service area, the proposed amendment continues to promote Frederick County's government in its effort to provide accessible, effective, and high-quality government services to its citizens, business owners, and community partners. Proposed amendment would be inserted in the plan within Chapter 6, Public Facilities, Creating Community." Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the public facilities addition and the 2030 comprehensive plan amendment? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a move for adoption of this amendment to the comprehensive plan with the edits as noted by the Planning Director.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is a request for a pump and haul permit, Williams Drive, 1154 Greensprings Road. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a pump and haul request for an existing residence located at 1153 Greensprings Road, I'm sorry, 1154 Greensprings Road. The approximately one-acre property contains a four-room, of which two or bedrooms, 862 square-foot structure, constructed sometime before 1960. Now, I would note that the entire property is located within the 100-year floodplain, which you can see on the location map to your left. These are some pictures of the structure, and then the creek that constitutes a floodplain that's located at the back of the structure. Now, the subject property currently does not have any form of sewage treatment system, and the Health Department did conduct onsite sewage, some studies, and they determined that the site was not suitable for a drain field due to the floodplain issues and the poor soils. And the property owner was also unable to obtain an easement. There was a letter to that fact in your agenda. Now, the property owner appears to have addressed the requirements of the county code to utilize a pump and haul system for the property at 1154 Greensprings Road. And as shown in your agenda, the property owner has also established a relationship with Martin Septic Service. So tonight, a decision from the Board of Supervisors on this permanent pump and haul application request is requested. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. Davis, the property owner, is also here.
Questions, staff? There is no septic there currently?
That's correct.
And people have lived there since 1960?
Correct. Some of the history was outlined in the memo regarding the violation. There was an illegal building addition that placed a bathroom on it, on the back of the structure, that was piped directly out to the creek, which obviously is a violation. The Building Department and the Health Department were dealing with the violation, which is ongoing, and the new owner is going to remove the addition and place the bathroom inside the structure. But there's still, there's never been a drain field on the property, so the pump and haul is the only means to get...
What limitations are put on properties that are approved for a pump and haul for additional additions and improvements?
Well, this property can't have any exterior additions due to the floodplain issue, but there are no limitations regarding a pump and haul for an existing structure, because one of the caveats is that it has to be an existing structure in order to utilize a pump and haul.
Questions, staff? Mr. Davies, do you wish to speak to that application?
Mr. Chairman, comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like to note that the, this property is located in the Gainesboro District, and the current owners made significant improvements to the appearance of the property, and just wanted to make sure that that was on the record.
Any other questions? If not, this is Gainesboro.
Move the request for a pump and haul permit be approved.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Hearing none. We'll vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. Next is a discussion of the UDA centers and the 2030 comprehensive plan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation of discussions we've held for, over the past year. We talked about it at the retreat in 2013. We touched a little, you know, we've talked about it, we had a work session with you all, and we touched on it again at the retreat this past February. And what I'm presenting to you tonight is the same draft, we're calling it UDA centers, but what we've done is we've tried to address some of the questions that have previously been raised. As you recall, this, the Urban Center Design Cabinet policy and the TND ordinance were previously discussed in draft format, they continue to be in draft format, as we're trying to address some of the concerns we think we've heard and we think we addressed. So with that said, I'm going to jump to the good stuff. Planning Commission has talked about this recently, and they think it's appropriate to move forward. We're just trying to see if we've addressed some of your concerns. And two of the words that stuck with us that we hadn't addressed to this date was the UDA center. Who is it for and why? And real fast, the UDA center is part of our growth management strategy overall in the county. 2008, we did a rural area study. We looked at the rural areas, we saw the growth out there, we recognized it was important to maintain the property rights in the rural area. We created additional opportunities for folks to capture the value out of their land without further developing their land in the rural areas. And then we started looking at the urban areas of the county, the urban development area. And one thing that we found is, you've got, in this community, you've got rural development, you've got suburban development, but we were starting to hear interest in concentrated development within the urban development area in key locations. Previous years, we adopted our target urban center areas, but we'd never developed the actual ordinance to implement that. And what we're talking about now is more direct policy to guide what a UDA center should look like, an urban center should look like, and ultimately, we have an ordinance to help implement it. The questions that we heard is, with the UDA center, why are we doing it? Well, it's the growth management strategy, as I just noted. We think we need to make sure we can accommodate it at the right locations and the right scale. This policy tries to get us there. And then the other question that we are hearing is, who is it for? And what we've found, we're a growing community, we grow at 3% a year, we've done that for the better part of the last three decades. So we certainly have an expanding population base. We have people that are moving to our community, but we also have our own residents that their kids are staying here and they're choosing, our residents are choosing to stay here when they retire. And what we wanted to make sure is that we continue to provide opportunities to entice our own residents to stay in our community. Through the education system, we've learned that, you know, that we have an excellent education system, the kids are coming out of the high school program and going on to college or going into the workforce. We want to make sure we can keep them in this community. They go away to college, we want to make sure that they still want to come back. And one thing we were learning is that we weren't having the employment opportunities, the job opportunities, the excitement, if you will, and types of housing choice. And we think the UDA center provides a little more opportunity there that we hadn't seen and hadn't been able to provide for the, for our younger generations. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, the residents that are retiring. We've got a number of residential retirement communities. Lutheran Home is the most recent of significance, but we have Shenandoah. And what we're seeing is people are moving and trying to get less responsibility, if you will, smaller lots, lower maintenance. And there's a belief that an urban, a UDA center, which has that walkability, so you could walk to a shop, you could walk to a restaurant, whatever the case, that might be something to help entice keeping our retired residents in our community. So the who is it for, we think it captures both the younger and the older populations. I don't want to revisit all the policy, because you've seen it before, but essentially, the policy that we're talking about is consistent with what we talked about before, and it says that the UDA center's got to be in the right location, it's got to be scaled. We've come up with design ideas. It's driven by the development community, it's driven by the property owners who want to buy into this, but we feel that you have to put it, if it's something that we want as a community, you need to have the policies, and ultimately, you need to have the ordinances so that it can be materialized. And that's what we're here tonight, is to see, did we address some of the concerns you had on the policy concepts? Are we headed down the right direction? If the answer is yes, then we're ready to move forward to the next level. If the answer is no, is there more work we need to do on it? We're looking for your input on that. As I noted, the Planning Commission has talked about it, and they did it as most recently as the retreat, and they feel that we've addressed the concerns that they were hearing. So I'm asking you, did we get there for you? This is a discussion, so any input is certainly valuable and welcome.
Questions, staff? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Lawrence, if these, what would be the effect of this policy on densities within these centers versus the rest of the UDA area?
Well, this is a policy. So the policy itself doesn't have a drastic density, because you all control that with The guidance is probably consistent with what we see. We have a higher-density RP standard now, which we recently did a rezoning Madison Village. The belief is the densities could be comparable to what, what we recently approved. The beauty of this urban center is you also implement the commercial side so that you have the walkable environments, whether it's employment, looking at employment, looking at the, the retail, the commerce side of things. So this is a, a complex animal as opposed to just having a higher-density residential complex. The densities, typically, the, the UDA is targeted to do a four-unit per acre density. It's much, coming in a much lower, it's much lower, 2.3 typically. This concept, you could probably see it go to the six to eight. It's enabled to go higher, but what we've, what we've learned is there's not a lot of interest in the market to go higher, but the belief is you need to create policy for people to think. One, one thing that, in most of you all have experienced, the R4 districts, but the R4 district, which is what Snowden Bridge is, we had it on the zoning, in the zoning ordinance for 20 years before it was utilized. And it was utilized because somebody said, I think that the community is ready for it. As a developer, I'm ready to provide it. And that was halfway getting them there. We tweaked, we tweaked the ordinance to make it what we felt was appropriate. And I think what we're learning is these UDA center concept, with, without a policy, without an ordinance, people don't even, they say, I'd like to do it, but I don't have time to wait two, three years to create that policy and guidance. So this creates that opportunity to start the discussion. Ultimately, the Board of Supervisors makes the decision. You make the decision on rezonings. So if you think the concept makes sense, but you're not sure about the intensity or where it would be located, that's the benefit of the policy. It helps guide where, where the conversation should start, if, if somebody wishes to implement it.
I guess maybe my question should have been a little more specific. It, I understand its policy, but I guess, in the opinion of planners, would the densities change for this particular aspect?
Well, I would.
And I'm only asking for an opinion.
Yeah. No, I, I would think that the targeted density would probably be an eight to 10 unit per acre. There is, there is potential to go higher, but I, I think the reality is if we get it, we're only gonna get one of them every, possibly every decade. We have four of them thought up. So it's really driven by the market. What it does is it captures, we recognize we can, we continue to grow 3% every year. The economy, slow economy the last five years certainly affected that, but the average is 30% every decade, and I think we're gonna continue to see that. So we want to make sure we have places to capture so we don't continue to sprawl. And that's one reason I noted about the rural area study. We did the rural area study in 2008 because the board and the community said, hey, we're, we're seeing a lot of development in the rural areas. Is that, is that what we want? And one of the belief was, we don't want to affect people's property rights, but we'd rather see the growth go into the urban development area. So this, this is part of that growth management strategy to make sure we continue to provide opportunity to capture our 3% annual growth rate in a more efficient, managed way.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton?
Question, I don't have a problem with the concept that we're discussing here, but it seems to me, one of the things that I don't see here, and certainly would drive this, but could also deter this, is the ability to provide those public services like water and sewer. Has the sanitation authority looked at their long-range, can they actually accommodate the exponential population that would be in this area through this amendment?
Well, they haven't directly provided a yes or no, if, if I can answer it that way. The executive director of the sanitation authority is a member of our committee, so he's been involved in the discussions. As we have seen on other development proposals, there are certain areas in the county that don't have capacity, just because the pipes that are on the ground weren't sized appropriately. And there's other areas that, the, the pipes are available and the, and the, the plants, the, the water treatment, as well as the wastewater treatment are of capacity to manage it. The answer directly, from my opinion, is whether the population grows in a concentrated area or grows in the urban development area, it's the, it's, I think it's gonna be the same 3% growth rate that we see countywide, and you're still going to need the same amount of water and sewer. So I think we definitely have to make sure we can provide the water and sewer. That's a big initiative countywide because we don't want, we don't want to shut down our, our, our managed growth area, the urban development area that we've been working on for many years, 40 years, when you think of the Cincinnati Road Corridor. Because if we stop providing necessary water and sewer to that area, then you're promoting the rural area developments with septics. So I think we want to make sure we can accommodate this in the future.
Higher density in, in one particular area doesn't mean you have a, a lower density in the outline areas. You can still have the same growth that we're talking about there, but then have a more intense intensity of growth in a particular area. And so it would be important to know that the availability of those public services could be accommodated.
And, and I fully agree. I, I think the challenge we have is until, we have the targeted centers, and we've had them in the comprehensive plan for a number of years now, until somebody steps up and, and does a rezoning proposal and they start doing the detailed analysis, I don't think we're gonna be able to tell you whether or not that center has the capability of having the water and sewer, because the analysis hasn't been done. It's, it's an intense engineering undertaking. And that's what we always look to the, the applicant who's doing the rezoning to demonstrate to us what their demands will be and demonstrate to the FCSA and work with the FCSA to conclude that they have adequate water and sewer. At a rezoning stage, you all won't see a rezoning where the sanitation authority says, I can't provide that service. They may say, I'm concerned about it, but if, if the FCSA says they're, you know, that the water's not available or that the, the infrastructure to that site's not available, you'll see that in your comments. So that'd be, that'd be clear to you at a rezoning stage, and obviously, you decide at that point. If you don't think it's appropriate, if the timing's wrong, location's wrong, you don't resen, and therefore, the development doesn't occur there. The, the, the policy aspect that we're looking at is more the guiding policy. It doesn't have the engineering aspect to it, simply because that comes at a later date.
But that's to make sure that our vision is also shared with those who have to provide their services.
Yes. We, we, in working with sanitation authority, we know what areas of our sewer and water service area that they have concerns about, and we try to avoid doing intensive planning, growth planning in those areas because we know it's already a challenge.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think you've already stated this, but essentially, nobody's being forced to live or develop property in an urban development center. It's just providing another option for people should the marketplace, in other words, consumers, residents, or potential residents ask for it.
Correct. The planning practice for many years has been, what do we as a community want to accommodate? What do we think we need as a community? And what we found is the rural area development, you know, we, we want to continue to honor that. The suburban development that we've seen in our, our county for 40 years, we want to continue to honor that. And this just creates another option. And the key thing is if it's, it's at identified locations. So if it's, you, you can't come in, at the end of the day, you can't come in and establish one of these at a location that the board doesn't want it at. You all control that, or future boards control that, too.
Just a comment, if I might, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I think that this was an interesting study, and the fact that we're gonna experiment in some limited areas makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. Our ordinance already permits a density that I'd sure hate to see us experience a lot of, but we continue to hear from successive younger generations their desire not to maintain a bunch of turf and to live in a walkable, bikeable community where they can walk to work or hike to work or bike to work and home and shopping and, and a condensed area. I mean, it is a lifestyle that appeals to a segment of the younger generations that we didn't have an opportunity for folks to address in our community. So I want us to be careful, but.
Understand.
I'm supportive of the effort.
Discussion. I searched the document for words that tell me that if I'm an owner or a developer in one of these urban centers, that I can do this, not that I have to do this, and I don't find them.
I think that's the general, the general, the comprehensive plan in general doesn't tell you what you have to do. It says, these are the things we would look for in certain areas of the county. So the.
The affected party who comes in and wants to do development in the UDA, UDA center will not be inflicted by this if it's not what they want to do.
Yes, it, it wouldn't.
Can't see the words that give me the comfort I'm looking for.
The, the overlap, the way we've set up the comprehensive plan is we've got an urban, we have our urban development area delineated. We have our sewer and water service area delineated. We have land use plans, so we have generally identified where residential belongs and commercial industrial. The UDA center is an overlay, so it goes on top of that. So if you choose not to develop the intensity of an urban development or UDA center, that's fine. We would like to see it because that's a great location based on our studies, but if the property owner feels that that's, that's not for him, he's the property owner. You know, he can propose something. If he, typically, the UDA center is going to show up where we want commercial, where we want residential, and we're just creating an opportunity to create that density. But certainly, the underlying plans for that property, whether it be residential or commercial, is, is available for the property owner to, to choose and think about. Because of policy, we, we don't dictate. We say, here's our suggestions based on our analysis.
Part I struggle with from day one was the determination by us that this area was an urban development center. And encouraging, as we do, people to develop it in a certain way. But if there was some other area of the county that matched it perfectly, but it wasn't in one of those circles, I would have rather that somehow our property qualified for a UDA center than it was predetermined that it would be. And at some point, they're the same. But by the time it gets around to where the circles are drawn, I don't know if they'll be the right circles. And then I worry about the, the infliction upon things. I do believe there's a component of this that's market-driven that will surface in, in different ways. I just struggle with the thing.
Understand.
It's those aspects. I don't know what you do when you look at somebody and say, well, my property's just like that property, but you didn't draw a circle around them when you drew circles. I guess they could apply for a circle, and we go through a process, but what, what message have we sent out for the circles that we picked out today? It just looks like it'll fit. It's just not totally clear to me. Other people?
Yeah, one thing that I would remind you all is that we have, we have our annual applications for comp plan amendments, the CPBA process, and it's every June. And the beauty of that process is if somebody wants to do something on their land and our comprehensive plan doesn't support it, they have an opportunity to ask the question. So if someone says, I'd like to do an urban center, but you're not identifying my property for an urban center, they can make application. And then, you know, we haven't done it in a couple of years, but essentially, if they make application by July, or by June 1st, by mid-July, we're having a work session with you all to sense whether that's an appropriate land use. So we try to do a pretty quick turnaround to say, yeah, that, that warrants a study. We like the concept, or nah, that's not where we want something. So adopting a comprehensive plan gives people guidance, but there's always opportunities to tweak the comprehensive plan based on what the proposal is, the location, and ultimately, the input and direction from the, from the elected officials. I don't know if that addresses your concerns, but I think it gets back to, I think it's important to have policy to provide guidance, but to recognize that policy does get tweaked based on the economy, based on the location, based on the development proposal, whether it's the intensity or a lower, higher or lower intensity. I think that's the, one of the beauties of our community is we've been able to respond as the right proposal came along at the right location.
Well, those kinds of things, you need to be carefully, as Supervisor DeHaven said, bear the test of time. The faces and the names change, and I've said it behind the table many times and saw how things that I thought said one thing were interpreted by different people later on. And so I'm awfully leery of those.
Understand.
I thought it said one thing when we passed it, but by golly, somebody says it says something else now. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
I think you all know I've struggled with this for well over a year from the Planning Commission Retreat well over a year ago in a recent work session, and I think there's societal issues here with this particular plan, and I'm just not ready to open the door yet, so I, I can't support this going anywhere. You know, I've been, not saying we won't, but it's not something to come down the road. I've looked at some of these plans in Virginia and North Carolina, and so far, I haven't seen something that I like, that I want, that it has a lot of this walkability stuff, but when you go and look at the reality, it doesn't measure up, and so I'm just not ready.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question? What would be the process if we decide that, I see one of your bullet points, is this ready for a public hearing? What would be the process as we move through this item?
This, what's presented to you tonight in your agenda is actually policy language. It's draft language. So if there's, obviously, if there's no support, then we're not gonna pursue it. If there's support, in our minds, the next step is to start the public hearing process, Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and then at the end of the day, you all decide if you want to adopt it as part of the comprehensive plan. So the, your agenda has, it's actually two pages. It's a two-page document that would be inserted into the comprehensive plan if it was ultimately adopted.
Does it go through the Planning Commission, their public hearing process, then to hear for a public process?
Correct.
Other discussion? All right, the request before you is, are you ready to send this to public hearing? Is there a motion to do so?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question first? I apologize.
Sure.
Since you're not ready to send this to public hearing, well, Mr. Lawrence, I'm sure will get the benefit of their input as to how they would like to see it changed, or if not changed, not move at all? So I guess I'm looking for, you know, I always like to see things thrown out.
The F's always seeking input on any decision, yes or no. I guess that's a wise observation.
I certainly always like to see things thrown out for discussion and comprehensive study. Not saying that in the end I will support it, but I certainly do like to hear all the ideas, all the pros, the cons. So I would certainly, I'll make the motion to move this forward in the process.
Okay, we have a motion to move to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor DeHaven.
Until we set out this type of development within our comp plan, no one has the opportunity to really ask for it unless they first ask for a comp plan change. So I think it's a logical step to include the opportunity within the comp plan and then let folks come and ask if it's time for them to develop a plan that, that fits in the concept. Until it's there, they have a, a whole process, a rather lengthy process to go through before they can even ask the question of, is it time for this type of development in this area that I'm considering? So that's it. Thanks.
Well, I would offer one observation. I struggle with right things and wrong things, but Supervisor Fisher gave me an idea. I think at the end of the day, before I can support it, I'm gonna have to see one of them. And I haven't seen one of them. So generally, I don't like things to move forward until I'm reasonably sure I could support it at the end. And yet, I understand the, the desire to get input and find out what people think. Trouble is with most of our public hearing, nobody speaks. So any other discussion? We'll vote. I think we better go down the line on this one. This is to send to public hearing, support the motion. Supervisor Wells? Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
No.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. We're off to public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Staff might be able to identify some examples that we might take a closer look at. We'll put together-
Somebody promised me they'd do that, but I can't remember who made the promise. It was not staff. It was not staff.
My wife would not mind a field trip to the Wegmans at the Leesburg Town Center, Mr. Chairman. I think that that might be a-
I would strongly suggest you look at that development because that incorporates all of the elements that Mr. Lawrence is talking to you about this evening.
And it has Wegmans.
Somebody give me directions, and I'll try to get there.
Take Route 7.
She driving?
She'll drive, I'm sure.
All right, Board Liaison Reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Supervisor Lofton.
Being involved with Shawnee Land Senatorate District Advisory Committee in that community, I know that we had people speak at last meeting to the proposed budget for the Shawnee Land and in particular, the paving. And I know that some of you have had calls and some of you may get calls with concerns about that. There are a couple of things I would like to point out, though, from talking to certain people, and that is, A, the roads are not owned by Frederick County, so be aware of that. B, those roads are not subject to VDOT standards because they are private streets. And I understand that, and I haven't seen them, there are roads up there that certainly could use maintenance, use good base, use good tar and chip. And so I would like for people to know that. With that being said, I still do intend to have a public meeting in the Shawnee Land, hopefully at the fire department. I've already talked to them. They're willing to allow us to have their room up there to conduct the public meeting where all these questions can be thrown out, and we can get the answers that we need and give it a thorough discussion, and then decide if, in fact, it is in the best interest of the community to do the paving project as proposed or to alter it in some manner.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add on to that, one of the phone calls that I feel that in our code of Frederick County, we list Shenan, excuse me, Shandau, Shawnee Land roads as being highways under the Code of Virginia for Frederick County purposes. And people have taken that to mean that we have accepted those roads and we did that for legal purposes so that we could have enforcement of traffic on those roads. It had nothing, and the person I spoke to had great confusion in explaining that, but just in case anybody throws that, that was placed in, I think, 86 is when we did that, but it's been quite a while.
Well, it would be good if there was an advisory body up there that spoke for the people, and the majority of the people supported the advisory board, and we took the recommendations of the advisory board. That would be a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, let me just add one more point, though, and that is one of the key issues that I hear time and time again is the ability to disseminate information to the residents. Some would like to have a mailing, and Mrs. Perrin does a great job with her newsletter up there, trying to inform the citizens of what's going on. And we have struggled with that since I had been involved with the Senatorate District Committee. They, the committee holds meetings not only quarterly but monthly, and the monthly meetings that are not quarterly meetings are there just for input of the citizens, to allow them to come in, to ask questions, to speak their minds, so that the advisory committee can get a good feel for what the community would like to have. And so I would say that I am impressed, this advisory committee has been very active. They have been very receptive to people who want to speak. They don't always agree, obviously, of those people that are speaking, obviously, on both sides of the issue. But I do think I would like to see more participation, and I wish I could figure out a way to let everyone know and get everyone's input. But even when we send out surveys, generally, 20% is the best you'll get as far as response. So anybody who has any ideas in that community of how we can increase that response and increase that dissemination of information, I would love to hear those ideas.
I know back in the days when we first got involved and the sanitation district was created, it was the desire of the board to help those people take care of themselves, and I have great faith that at the end of the day, they'll do that. So I appreciate you trying to help them figure it out. Any other liaison reports? All right, then we'll open the meeting to citizen comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the board on any topic? So please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Doty Stottlemyre, and I live in the Shawnee District, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments on a couple of things discussed tonight. The first is Medicaid expansion, and I'm sure that it is difficult trying to see how that's going to affect our localities, particularly, our federal government's promising that after, they're going to pick up 100% of the increase, and then, you know, after three years, they're going to drop it dramatically. So it's, the localities and everyone else is going to be left holding the bag. It's a mixed message, and if you believe the government, you can keep your health care and everything else, then I'm sure that you guys really want to bank on that. The second is about the amendment for the, for the public utilities, public buildings. I keep hearing from you guys, the Board of Supervisors, that there's no intent at all to build a county building that we don't really need. And I find it amusing that we keep getting amendments to put a county building someplace in the urban areas. And the third is, speaking, speaking at public hearings or just to you guys, it's, I've grown kind of thick-skinned, so if you guys make fun of me or belittle what I've said, it doesn't really bother me. A lot of people aren't like that, and respect is a two-way street. Anyway, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
More supervisors' comments? Well, I feel like I have to respond to the last comment. I have not observed any member of the board and would speak to them and don't think that I have belittle any comment from the public, and it's not the desire of this board, as I know it, that that ever happens or should happen. Somebody sees it, they need to let me know. Other comments? All right.
Mr. Chairman, move for adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.